Thank you for joining us. We'll be starting shortly. Thanks for those of you who are just joining us. We'll be getting started just shortly. Why don't we go ahead and get started? Hello, everyone. Welcome. My name's Danielle Demasius, and I'm one of the founders of One MI. Thank you for joining the Your Vote Matters Mercer Island School Board Candidate Forum. This forum was organized by One MI, Do the Work MI, and the Strom Jewish Community Center to stimulate a conversation around local governance and how elected officials impact the lives of islanders. Tonight's forum is centered on understanding how equity and inclusion play a role in our candidates' vision for Mercer Island schools. When we were thinking about moderators for this evening, we didn't have to go far. Mercer Island's own Martha Brandt, an award-winning journalist, was a natural choice. Martha spent most of her 20-year journalism career at Newsweek Magazine, where she covered the George W. Bush campaign, and then the presidency. She was the first reporter to interview President Bush after 9/11, which won her and her team a prestigious Edgar A. Poe Award. She also traveled extensively covering Hillary Clinton as First Lady, but her very favorite posting was bureau chief in Mexico City. She holds an MA in Latin American Studies from Stanford University and a BA in History from Yale University. In 2014, her and her family moved to Mercer Island, and today, her children attend Mercer Island High School. On behalf of One MI, Do the Work MI, and Strom Jewish Community Center, I want to thank all of our candidates for our service, for your service to our community, and everyone in our audience for joining us. And of course, thank you, Martha. It's an honor to have you. And with that, I'll hand to you. Thank you very much, Danielle. That's a very kind introduction. Good evening, everybody. It feels like school board members are increasingly across this country in a hot seat. In fact, it feels like the school board has become the front line for the culture wars in our nation. Here on Mercer Island, there are a lot of important issues that the school board is going to be addressing this year: hiring a new superintendent, adopting a budget, of course, figuring out the ramifications of declining enrollment. And then, of course, there are two renewal levies coming up in February. You all know this, but I'm letting people know how big of a task you guys have ahead of you, including setting policy and goals for the district. And all of this in the midst of a passionate debate about what equitable education means. So like Danielle, I want to start by saying thank you to each of the candidates for being willing to serve this community and for taking the time to ask, answer some of these pretty tricky questions. So for some housekeeping, we're going to start with a two-minute introduction from each candidate. We're going to start with Deborah Lurie, who is currently on the board in position four, and then we'll turn to her challenger, who is Lacey Aker. And then next, we'll hear from Brian Giannini Upton, who holds the position on the board, position two, and then from his opponent, Dan Glowitz. So you'll have two minutes for that, and then we'll turn to questions. Now, I wrote these questions based on questions that were submitted to the forum organizers and also based on conversations that the organizers have been having in the community. You'll have one minute to answer those questions, and then at the end, you'll have a minute and a half for closing statements. If you go over, just giving you a heads up by, let's say, five seconds, I'll let you know. But we'll have to turn off the mic in order to keep things flowing and in the interest of fairness. So those are the ground rules, and let's get going with candidate introductions, and let's start with Deborah.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank One MI, Do the Work MI, and the Strom Jewish Community Center for hosting us this evening. It's a great opportunity to get our voices out into the community, which can often be a challenging thing for school board directors. The promise of public education is for every child to succeed in school and life. To accomplish this promise, every child must be given resources, supports, and interventions based on their needs. I believe in educational equity and inclusion, and I'm the right candidate to continue fostering these values on behalf of the community. As the concept of equity can mean different things to different people, the National School Board Association defines the concept of educational equity as the following: "We affirm in our actions that each student can, will, and shall learn. We recognize that based on factors, including but not limited to disability, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status, students are deprived of equitable educational opportunities. Educational equity is the intentional allocation of resources, instruction, and opportunities according to the need, requiring that discriminatory practices, prejudices, and beliefs be identified and eradicated. The board must work with the superintendent to shape an authentic vision and mission. Here on Mercer Island, we are seeing an increase in the systems of support available for schools, investments in capacity building, and diverse interventions available to support student success in university, universal, high-quality teaching and learning environments, and look forward to continued growth. We are breaking down barriers to allow all students the opportunity to learn and grow. The school board is engaging families, communities, and internal and external stakeholders, has a clearly defined annual work plan, engages in self-assessment to determine priorities for board development, engages in ongoing learning to expand our knowledge of the latest developments in education, and has multiple approaches to engaging our community. Finally, an effective board works to ensure that our work is aligned with system-wide efforts to improve achievement for all learners. All means all. Thank you."
Thank you, Deborah. Now, let's please hear from Lacey Aker.
Thank you, and I would echo the thank you to our fantastic community organizations for facilitating this event for us all. I am so grateful to be in community with you all again virtually tonight. And when we engage in these conversations on equity and inclusion, we often expose our own predispositions, and in doing so, we lay bare a lot of our vulnerabilities and our lived experiences. So I want to take a moment to just appreciate that all of the candidates are doing this tonight, and send my gratitude to them as well. These are not topics that we approach with a cavalier attitude or dismissiveness, and you don't arrive at equity and inclusion as much as you put the hard work into it and move towards it every day. And it's also as much of a personal journey as it is a community-centered conversation. As someone whose career has been almost exclusively in public service, equity, inclusion are areas that I have given a great deal of thought to and consideration of. I've worked with the Environmental Protection Agency to assist in creating updated curriculum for restricted pesticide use on indigenous lands. As a University of Washington Board Fellow, I led curriculum development on equity and inclusion for a large nonprofit Board of Directors. And of course, I've had the privilege to teach world history, US history, and civics, where so many of these important conversations happen. Finally, a large portion of my current work with the US Department of Education involves a project to increase federal student aid access to our most marginalized communities, including students currently or formerly experiencing homelessness. These experiences are diverse, but they rest on the commonality of engaging thoughtfully, engaging humbly, and really connecting with the community that I am and we are serving. We lead these conversations by providing ample space for differing opinions and experiences. We partake in the discussion by extending grace, showing humility, and not succumbing to indifferences or defensiveness. And I look forward to doing so with you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, let's turn to Brian Giannini Upton.
Hi, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I want to echo all of the thanks from our previous speakers. My name is Brian Giannini Upton. I currently serve on the school board, and I'm seeking reelection. I also am part of, well, a collection of 24 people on the committee, the Legislative Committee for the Washington State School Directors Association, and an active member with the Federal Relations Network. We work together to create a legislative platform that represents the 1,470 school board directors across the state and the 1.2 million students that we all work for. To quote Dr. Ivory Tolson, professor at Howard University and president and CEO of Equality Education for Minority Minorities Network, "Students aren't deficient. The onus for a lack of achievement is on the system." So I define equity work as a community's ongoing accounting and reconciliation of goals, outcomes, resources, needs, and investments. In regard to the school district, I believe it is the responsibility of education leadership to set standards of rigorous academics, high expectations, and hold the belief that each child can and will succeed. Then, we work together to identify gaps in achievement, understand why those gaps persist, and then develop policies and budgets that focus our resources into the areas of greatest need. In doing this work, it's important that the data, both qualitative and quantitative, is looked at from multiple perspectives, offers opportunity for thoughtful analysis, and is observed over time. And finally, community collaboration and relationships are important. Getting to know the students is essential because they are going to tell us about the data and not the other way around. So I was a kid that had to navigate a lot of trauma and a lack of academic guidance, and there's no doubt that I would have fallen through the cracks from the global pandemic. This is one of the many reasons that I'm so passionate about my belief that every child, regardless of race, characteristic, or circumstance, has a right to the resources and supports that they need to create their future. I want to thank you for your support and for being partners ensuring equity for all learners on Mercer Island.
Thank you. And now, Dan Glowitz.
Hi. First, I want to thank the JCC, One MI, and Do the Work MI for hosting this forum. I attended preschool at the JCC, as did both of my children, so it's a particular honor to participate here tonight. I'm running for school board because I believe that together, Mercer Island can be a beacon that shows what a small, well-educated, and passionate community can achieve in public education. In order to accomplish that task, we need to recognize that our district, like each student in it, is unique. That means that we must accept and address the challenges that were presented with here on our island, rather than looking elsewhere. In order to ensure equity in our schools, we must recognize that each student is unique, that each mind is its own network of neurons, and each individual is shaped by their own identity, culture, and experiences. Equity is recognizing this fact and providing a tailored education that enables each student to thrive. That path will vary with each student, whether it be through the arts and literature, math and science, on the athletic field, a chessboard, or time with a therapy dog. Equity is also data. As the Center for Public Education has observed, school leaders who want to make sure their schools are equitable should first look at their data. Equity is more than reading slogans from a script or blindly borrowing catchphrases from the national dialogue. Equity is listening to the needs in our community and enabling each student to realize their full potential by providing a well-rounded education that is rigorous, relevant, innovative, and individualized, one that enables them to take the next step in their journey upon graduation, wherever that may be.
Thank you, all of you. So now, we're going to turn to questions, and as I mentioned, they're going to be one-minute answers. And of course, we're going to mix up the order in which you reply. And I want to ask you to further a little bit your comments about diversity, equity, and inclusion from your introductions and ask, why do you think that islanders in general should be invested in creating diverse and inclusive schools? And how would you rank these issues in your own order of priorities, given everything that the school board needs to do? And we're going to start with Brian Giannini Upton this time.
There we go. That's an interesting question. So why should all islanders be invested in equity, diversity, and inclusion? Because this is a major issue in America. It's a major issue in our society, both locally and beyond. If our students grow up in a bubble here on Mercer Island that aren't exposed to diverse communities, cultures, then they're not going to be successful in the world when they leave the island. We are geographically an island, but we're not isolated. And so the impacts of the world impact our students, and our students will impact the world. For me, equity and inclusion access is my number-one priority. It has been for four years, and it's the reason that I lean into the work that I do. And whether it's testifying on panels of the House of Representatives, visiting the Department of Education, or traveling around the state, I want to hear stories of what's happening around us and the communities around us and understand how we can improve their lives while we improve our lives as well.
Thank you. And now, I was hoping Dan Glowitz could respond.
Hi. Equity is important because the principle of equity is each individual realizing their full potential. The quote from James Baldwin in the book All God's Children, "For these are all our children, we all profit by our pay for whatever they become." The challenges we face is a community and as a country and in our world are enormous. And in order to tackle those, we have to enable students to achieve what they're capable of. And so equitable principles is recognizing that and equipping students to go forth into the world and to live up to their potential. It's also, I think, General O'Malley, the Joint Chief of Staff, captured it well. It's situational awareness. I think when you have equity and you're exposed to a variety of viewpoints, you are aware and receptive to what other people say, and that allows the best ideas to come forward.
Deborah Lurie.
Thank you. This is a great question. I think that fundamentally, when you're talking about equity, diversity, and inclusion, the underlying issues are respect, acceptance, and empathy. And if one has those characteristics, then one is going to embrace equity, diversity, and inclusion. The education that we provide our children, our students on Mercer Island, is reading, writing, and arithmetic, and yet, it's so much more. We're building character. We're developing them as people, and these are our future leaders. We need students who understand themselves and understand the world around them, and they're not going to be able to do that unless they understand and can empathize with the path that each person takes.
Thank you. Lacey Aker.
Yeah, I feel this as well. It's a wonderful question, and I think one that we really need to engage with. And I think there's a couple parts to this as we think about it. I think first, we should be interested in equity and inclusion. If we are interested in human rights, if we're interested in everyone having an equal opportunity to participate in this society that we love so much. And schools often are seen as this institution that should level the playing field between different people and different groups. And so the idea that it somehow might serve to ossify or to otherwise kind of harden the divisions between us, I think, is a really important piece of this to consider. So I think the question about ranking issues is well noted, but I would caution to not feel like we need to silo equity and inclusion as its own issue because it really pervades all of these other issues that we're working with and dealing through as we kind of come out of this pandemic. So equity and inclusion is important in its own right. It's important that it informs kind of everything that we do, from the budget to academic clubs to how we interact with the community.
You're at time. Thank you so much. So moving on to the second question I have here. Mercer Island has an increasingly diverse population, including families of different religious traditions. So my question to you is, how should the school board respect these family cultures when it comes to school holidays, testing, and school assignments? And I'd like to start with Lacey.
Yeah, definitely. Another excellent question. When we're thinking about religious traditions in terms of how it impacts our calendar, we, of course, have to be mindful that, in many ways, the calendar is sort of set at various state and federal levels. And so we're kind of working with that component and then thinking about what can we do, of course, at the local level. And so I think having educators continue to extend grace with things like time extensions, it seems really maybe small, but I think it's important to have that component there to think about how can teachers construct their assignments, how we can extend due dates, and really work to not just have cultures as kind of a traditional sort of food and costume piece, but really, how can we share culture and religion in a meaningful way in the schools themselves?
Thank you. Deborah.
Thank you. This has actually been on my mind a lot this year. You know, it came up again at the beginning of the school year when the Jewish holidays are arising, and I'm Jewish as well. And so this impacts myself and my family every year. I can say one of the things that I was very proud of on board is that when we realized, I don't know if it was this school year or last school year, that the first day in kindergarten fell on Rosh Hashanah. Several years before that happened, we moved to modify the school calendar so that kindergarteners, incoming kindergarteners, didn't have to make choices. I think that's an example of what we need to be doing. We need to be planning ahead. We need to know what is coming and what holidays and celebrations impact every different group. It doesn't mean that we can always accommodate each one, but the first step is knowing. And I know that the PTA has done an excellent job in coming up with a statewide calendar of all the important celebrations and commemorations for different religions around the state, and that's definitely the first place to start. I would love to go on, but my time is up.
Thanks for self-policing. Dan, you're next.
Yeah, I would echo what Deborah Lurie said. I think that we need to be proactive. I think it's a logistics matter, largely, I mean, to be able to accommodate to the full extent we can. And so it's communication, transparency, looking at the calendar, seeing what's going to come up, and then being proactive about it so that we can address them beforehand and be respectful of everyone's religious traditions.
Thank you. And now, Brian.
Thanks a lot. Boy, yeah, that's a complex issue. Certainly, there need to be accommodations made, and part of it comes with cultural competency and awareness. We want to have that IQ built up so that we can plan a calendar that is accommodating, but also throughout the year, there may be month-long periods of fasting, which could intersect with high-stakes testing. And so it's about teachers being aware of their classes, their learning communities, of each individual child, the cultural and ethnic background, and how this is going to map out and impact their lives. I think we're doing a lot of that with the pandemic right now as well, engaging or working around engagement with students, trying to make sure that we're pulling students in, using that same awareness of understanding where students are coming from and what they need to move forward at the appropriate pace and keep pace is going to be important. It's also going to require a conversation with staff and community and a lot of other things, our neighboring districts, in order to organize that.
Okay, thank you all. Moving on to question three. There have been polarizing arguments around the nation about how to teach students to think about race in the context of our history and systems of government. How should Mercer Island schools handle this? And what role does the school board have in setting the curriculum? And we're going to start with Dan.
People are complex, and we live in a complex world with a complex history. I think that's the beginning in order to start thinking about history, that it's not a simple narrative of heroes and villains. And I think it's equipped not just to understanding the dynamics that we confront in the world, but also science. I mean, anything, any system that presents real challenges has multiple dynamics. So I think it's equipping students to be able to look at the world with a deep lens and to dive into it. As I began with, it's General O'Malley saying situational awareness is critical for West Point grads. And it's not just for the military. It's anybody. So yeah, I think that we live, thankfully, in a community that understands complexity, that is educated, and then it's bringing them along and being transparent of what the curriculum involves, why we're teaching it, and to engage in conversation to dispel any misconceptions or misunderstandings.
Thank you. Brian.
So to start off with, curriculum is a really long process. There's a curriculum committee that is made up of educators and parents, community members, and it can take a year to two years to go through and select a piece of curriculum, to put it through equity lenses and all these different filters before it's ever presented to the board for final approval. So the board doesn't really direct curriculum in that sense. We're aware of what's happening. We're reading the books ahead of time, but we're not that involved in the operations of it. That said, we do set the policy at the highest level. And so when we say that we want curriculum that is relevant, that speaks in a culturally competent way, and tells a story from multiple perspectives that really adds respect around that for our students, where they see themselves recognized, that's going to be really important. So I think that's where our work is at the board, at setting that guiding policy.
Okay. Lacey, how about you?
Yeah, so as a history teacher, as a civics teacher, this is something I have not only spent academic time with in my masters, but of course, in the classroom as well. A big component of thinking about the board's role in this, in addition to the curriculum itself, is really about how we model conversations with one another, leading by modeling those positive behaviors and interactions that we have with one another. So I think that's a potentially underlooked portion of this. But I think it is very much about understanding where kids are at, developmentally speaking, speaking to the nuance in the curriculum so that eventually, they exit our schools, critical thinkers, effective researchers. And importantly, they have, by the time they leave our schools, the ability and the practice of speaking with one another and a civil discourse.
Thank you. Deborah.
Guys are tough on us with these one-minute answers. So for me, the main issue, well, one of the main issues, is making sure that we have a diverse curriculum. I think we've really improved on that in the last couple of years in terms of adopting curriculum and texts to make sure that they come from all different points of view. I think that's something different than with the parents' generation. You know, it was all from one perspective. We're teaching our students facts. We're teaching them about life, right? And facts are from different perspectives, and those facts are dependent on what age our students are. So obviously, the more mature facts go to the older students. So we're, but students can't learn to apply those facts and think critically until they understand them. They can't understand them if they're not presented with different points of view. So it's our job as school board directors to make sure that our students are receiving a wide, full point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. So stay ready, Deborah, because you're up first next time. The next question is, the school district has begun to roll out a new model, the inclusive classroom. Rather than separating out special needs and high-cap kids into different classrooms in elementary and middle school, all kids would be taught as much all kids would be taught as much as possible in one class. Do you support this as a model? And how would you evaluate whether it is meeting the needs of all students? And we'll start with Deborah, as I said.
I prefer to have 10 minutes to answer this, but I'll go for a minute. So inclusive classrooms, I totally agree with it. I think the study that that we did several, like five years ago or less on the highly capable program and the special education program determined that our highly capable program was the least equitable program in the district. Most districts are moving away from that. Inclusive classrooms are important because all students can learn from each other. We can bring specialists in in order to, we can bring specialists in in order to, sorry, the chat popped up and distracted me. We can bring specialists in to make sure that all of our individual students' needs are met. That is, and there's different strategies as to doing that, but all evidence-based practices are conclusive, that inclusive practices are the best way to teach kids.
Okay, next, Lacey.
Yes, so the inclusive classroom is without a doubt a laudable and worthwhile goal to move towards. But putting that down, universal design for learning and educational research is notoriously challenging. The idea that we can easily measure something as kind of amorphous as learning or how to qualify an individual as gifted or not is incredibly complex. We don't have the privilege of things like randomized control trials like other disciplines do. And so it puts us in this environment and this situation where we're not necessarily able to successfully implement these ideas. And so I think kind of taking a step back, thinking about all the research that's going into it and making sure that research is actually valid is incredibly important. UDL is great on paper, but their own website notes that the implementation area of research is in its early stages. And they're encouraging contributions from the research field. So excellent goal. I feel like it's in very early stages and needs more research.
Okay, thank you. And that's time. So next, I'd like to hear from Brian.
Thanks so much. I'm a huge supporter of inclusionary practices. And one of the reasons is that Washington State ranks in the bottom 14 when it comes to engaging and educating our special education students. And I use that carefully because I don't want to slap a label on a student, or students are not labeled. And what this is about is removing barriers and labels from our students. Every child is a general education student first, and then by law, we are required to deliver them the best education we can and the services that they they need and the support they need in the least restrictive environment. That's our legal requirement of that. And so inclusionary classrooms, where everybody is there together with that diversity and that mix, is going to be really important. We want to make sure that students can stay with their classrooms, in their home neighborhoods, and see the kids that they see in their neighborhood and play with in their classrooms. It's so important for their development.
Okay, Dan?
So you can have a good idea, and it can still be the wrong time, or it could be implemented poorly. I think without question, it was the wrong time. Oh, that's right. I thought I was muted there. I think it was the wrong time. It was in the midst of a pandemic. There wasn't a board vote. There was no plan for implementation, and the district's own email out to parents of how it would work. It was the largest changes in a generation to the elementary and middle school levels. When Seattle did something similar, it merited their highest level of review and community involvement in a much larger district. And on top of that, as I said, so it was the wrong time, and it was also the wrong implementation. The consultants that we've hired from Syracuse, from across the country, charged $3,500 an hour. To me, that just doesn't sound right. It sounds a bit like the emperor has no clothes, and I think we need to pause and actually talk about what it means rather than catchphrases.
Well, speaking of talking about what it means, do you guys support this kind of model rolling out to the high school? I think people have expressed concerns about whether accelerated accelerated classes and even AP classes are going by the wayside. So as a follow-up to this question, I was hoping you could address that. And let's start with Brian.
There we go. So no, as far as I know, that's not a consideration. AP courses are not being eliminated, accelerated courses are not being eliminated. Highly capable services are not being eliminated. The the mode in which those services are delivered to students is what is being changed or modified. Students will still be screened, will still be identified for these tracks and these different things. It's just that they will be in the general education setting. Now, as far as our middle school and our high school, it's an opt-in program there. There is not a siloed, highly capable program there. And so students will be able to access those courses and continue to go after dual credit and graduation pathways and will be able to move as far as they can within the system. Yeah, there's no plan to eliminate those.
So Dan, I assume you, that's your take on it as well?
No, it's not. So as I said, there wasn't a board vote, there wasn't any public meetings. You know, I found it a bit surprising that when the play structure at Mercer Dale Park was redesigned, it was a more transparent, open process than the redesign of our elementary and middle school education. And let's be clear, Denise Geno, the former superintendent for Seattle Schools, which it seems that we're modeling the path on, has said publicly that her goal was to eliminate AP and honors courses. And frankly, just because there hasn't been a discussion, I don't know, I don't think anybody knows. When Fred Rundell was asked about how math would be taught to third graders in a class that was combined, he said, we'll figure it out as we go. And it's, now is not the time for experimentation. Now is the time for blocking and tackling and focusing on fundamentals. I disagree that this is the time to do it.
Deborah, how do you see the implications for the high school of this kind of inclusion?
First of all, everything that the board does is done in public. So this whole concept of meeting in private and discussing things is just frankly, an outright lie. AP and honors in the high school aren't going anywhere. There's never been discussion of it, and there's never would be consideration. The fantastic thing about the AP and honors programs or classes at the high school is that they are open to everyone. Any student who wants to take them is eligible to take them and will be enrolled. When I was a Mercer Island High School student, I was actually kept out of some of the honors classes because of space. That's not the case anymore. They will create more sections as long as there's the demand for it. Inclusive practices is about removing walls. Right now, we stick kids in a classroom and there's kids that should be eligible for those services that those students, the other students receive, but they can't get them because of the literal walls of a classroom. The the goal of inclusive practices is breaking down barriers, removing those walls, and providing services to all who need them. I'm very concerned with the information Mr. Glowitz is saying, and I really question where he's getting some information because it's just not accurate.
Lacey, you're up next. What's your take?
Yeah, this is such an important question and one that as an AP teacher, we've we've thought about a lot. Because it is both true that there are problems with the AP program kind of writ large, college board, thinking about access and equity. But again, I think this is why we really need to push a little bit more to really operationalize and define things like barriers. So for a kid like me who paid for college out of pocket and with loans, AP enabled me to receive a free year of education. So we're not talking necessarily about removing AP, but if we did as a way to remove a barrier, it's really setting up a barrier for other other kids. So that's kind of part of the consideration in this. It is open enrollment. I'm sure everyone is in favor of it staying open enrollment in terms of who can self-select in. And then I think we need to think about the pipeline to AP and the pipeline to honors. How can we ensure that the students in our schools feel comfortable signing up for AP since it is open to everyone? So that, I think, is what I would focus on.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Part of the job of the school board is to evaluate the superintendent's annual performance. Do you believe that these issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion should be part of the evaluation process? And if so, what specific metrics should be used? And we're going to start with Deborah.
So we have metrics, and we do evaluate the superintendent's performance every year on a calendar that we publish and approve every August. The metrics are, like I said, everything is public. They're posted on the agenda prior to every meeting. They're there in meeting minutes, and it's an important thing to monitor. What we look at is what types of programs there are, who is self-selecting into them, who is being offered places in them, for example, the elementary school highly capable program, the 504s, the ITPs, and how and what breakdown of students are qualifying for these services and who needs them and isn't qualifying for them. So we do monitor that every year. We are always open to receiving public input. And sometimes it takes a little bit of work to find the answer, but it's all out there. In the monitoring reports that we get yearly, there's explanation of the programs and activities that are happening around the district that are focused on equity, inclusion, and diversity.
Thank you. Lacey?
Yes, I think in this conversation, it might be important to point out that superintendents, as compared to other school staff, typically have a much shorter tenure. And studies vary, of course, but we're looking at around a superintendent serving for around four or five years. What this does is it creates a lot of churn in mission vision and values for school districts. So often, school districts feel like they're moving from one initiative to the next to the next. And so I think it's going to be really important as we're thinking about our next superintendent in terms of equity and inclusion to really ask them to demonstrate how they've shown equity and inclusion in districts that they've had before. And if they are carrying on mission vision and value from their prior district into this one, if so, why? If so, if not, why not? I think that's a really vital component to this when we're thinking about things like metrics when we're evaluating a superintendent's performance.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, first, even though I'm not running against Deborah, I would like to just briefly state that I never said that it was our documented intent to get rid of AP and honors courses. I just said that the former superintendent who just stepped down last spring for Seattle and the region, which is influential on the record, has said that. And when we don't have a board vote when it comes to changes in the elementary and middle school curriculums, it raises questions, not to mention legal issues in terms of if you look at the WACs or the RCWs, but that's another issue. And for the metrics, I have looked at it. I don't think they're robust enough. We look at classes on a rotational basis. You can't do it year to year. I think it's like every third year. So it's a little bit hard to get a full picture. And at least as far as I'm aware, I didn't see anything when it came to staff. It was just enrollment. So yeah, I think we need metrics, of course, and I think we need more robust metrics, and we need it annually.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, the probably number one job of a school board is to hire and monitor the performance of the superintendent. They are the lead learner and the lead educator in the district. And that relationship is really important. When you sign that contract and you set that forth with a superintendent, part of that is your policies and your board process, your governance process. In Mercer Island, we use something similar to policy governance. We have fundamentals, which are ends or goals. We have board policies and we have operational expectations, which is how we carve up the sandbox of whose authority and whose responsibility is what. Those things are all monitored on a regular revolving annual basis, and they involve monitored metrics and surveys from students to parents, educators, and other staff members. And we use that to monitor not only our workforce diversity, but how students are accessing our coursework, our extracurriculars, and how those testing are moving out. We're tracking students from kindergarten to graduation and seeing how they're accessing those courses. It's a major part of what we do.
Okay, well, those are my questions. And now we're going to get around to your conclusions and your ending statement. So I want to start with Dan. You have a minute and a half.
As many of you know, this is a pivotal time in our district. We're facing a budget crisis. We have a deficit of $7 million. 400 students have left the district. We need to figure out how to regain trust, how to open up the conversation, how to be forthcoming with the community. If we don't, the worry is that the district may go into a tailspin, and I think that shouldn't be dismissed. We do have an excellent school district. I was a product of Mercer Island High School. I moved to the island when my oldest son was entering kindergarten in order for him to attend school here. But now that's under threat, and it's under threat because I think many of the people that are running the district, it's business as usual. It's plowing ahead in the midst of a pandemic with untested ideas. And it's stressing the bonds that the school district has with the community, which has historically been strong. But with challenging circumstances is also the opportunity to reflect, reset, and reinvigorate. Ask for your vote in November. I think we can do it. I know we can do it, but we need to face the facts clear-eyed.
Thank you. Brian?
Here we go. So I guess what I'd want to conclude with is it's something that I worked with through WASTA and our legislative committees and resolutions. It's this concept of what is equity and what does that mean to students? So equity, and specifically racial equity, is creating a system wherein a student or outcomes for a student can't be predicted on race, characteristic, attribute, or circumstance. Our current education system, and for many, many years and generations, there have been desperate outcomes that could be predicted early on with a lot of accuracy for how a child was going to move through our system. What the district has done over the last four years, and I'm very proud to be a part of that team that's done it, is the shift in focus to the whole child. We now state at the district that students are the priority, that equitable and inclusive classrooms are our priority, and safe environments where all students can learn are a priority. And with that, school improvement plans, district improvement plans, and hopefully coming soon, board improvement plans are a regular part of how we map that down into individual classrooms and back up to the administration to ensure that every child has the resources and the services that they need to create their future. Because this is about the kids. It's about the children. We need to ensure that they have what they need to be successful.
Thank you. Lacey?
The questions and the topics surrounding equity and inclusion are vital, but they're also challenging. And that is the very difficulty of these conversations that make them so important. We grow in the areas that are uncomfortable. We find solutions in the areas that are uncomfortable. And ultimately, we move forward as a community in the areas that are uncomfortable. While my experience working with equity and inclusion are themselves diverse, I use a North Star of Community Discussion and additional opportunities for accessible transparency as a general guide. Our students are entering a world that needs their ability to think critically, to engage, to work, to be in discourse with one another. In turn, our students deserve a world that respects and embraces all their differences and unique capabilities. We're here today on this call or listening later because we deeply care about these issues and topics. These problems are large, they're complex, but I am confident that Mercer Island is up to the task of facing them with kindness and with generosity when we work together. Let's make sure that the goals that we have are based on solid research, have thoughtful, considerate implementation, and common communication serves as a thread throughout them.
Thank you. Deborah?
Thank you. It's impossible to answer all of these complex questions in one minute. I'm happy to meet with anyone and discuss them more fully at any time. Just please reach out to me. It's also impossible to lead this community without truly understanding and being involved in the Mercer Island Public Schools. I think every school district is unique, and every set of communities is unique. And it's ultimately important to understand the values that each member of the community brings. Finally, I'll say ultimately again, Finally, I'll say ultimately again, diversity, equity, inclusion is about learning to do better. Our job is to educate our students. We can't do that in a vacuum. The way that I like to think about it is throwing all of our core academic subjects in a bucket. And then diversity, equity and inclusion is the pale that surrounds it. We can't have our students learning these core subjects without understanding the world around them, without respecting each other, without respecting facts and information. And I really appreciate what Lacey said about kindness and understanding for the community. I couldn't agree with her more that our community has forgotten in a lot of ways how to be kind. And what we all need to remember is that for the most part, intentions are good and that we need to meet people where they are and help them improve because we can all do better. So thanks so much for your time and listening.
Thank you all so much for your time. These are really complex issues and it is tough to squeeze it into a minute. Absolutely right. But I just want to say again, as you guys have mentioned, public schools really are a pillar of our democracy and we really appreciate all of your energy and your time and your willingness to serve. Thanks again to those of you who paid attention tonight and who tried to become an informed electorate and especially to the sponsors, Strom Jewish Community Center, One MI and Do the Work MI. The election is in two weeks, November 2nd. So for whomever you vote, please do vote. And again, thank you all for participating tonight. Good night.
Thanks for hosting us. Good night.
Thank you for being here, Lacey. Good night.